No.
No.
No, they don't have to be capitalized.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
In the agenda.
So yeah, when you create an agenda.
Yes.
You notice every word except for the small ones.
Yeah.
Are capitalized.
Okay.
So when you fill out an agenda, it has to be that form. And you have to say discuss and take part in action. Or currently.
Yeah, but.
Well, we definitely.
Yeah.
But or if you want it to be a discussion, you can say just discussion.
Definitely. Next in order again, where you get.
Okay, thank you.
Have you seen the form?
I am feeling what I'm trying to utilize. Yeah. And so I'm. So. What do you think?
Um, he sent it out every.
I thought we could. Not say action, but. I would think you could have a workshop. We just couldn't take any votes at that.
Hi.
Can you hear me when I speak? Hello, council?
Can you hear us now?
No.
All right, we're good. No, he can't run the meeting. He doesn't have to run the meeting, but he may want to. Hey, Jeff, can we say something?
Hello, hello, hello. Can you hear me?
Okay, yeah, I want to make sure that you came across on the speaker. You're good.
Okay, I'm gonna stay muted. Hi, everybody.
Okay.
Hi, kiddos.
Ready?
Uh huh.
Okay. Okay, and we call a workshop to order. Does Mr. Stan have a moment of silence and a question? Okay, thank you. Now, please tell me where can you reply? All right. You'd like to say to me. And here. Honored in the presence of the flag. And elected reasons to the Texas. One state. One and then the physical. Be honorable, please.
Good evening. Mayor Jeff President's on vacation. Mayor Pro Tem Brent Foley.
Here.
Councilmember Linaeah Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick is on vacation. Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Here.
Thank you.
Question I have, do we have a quorum or not? If um.
We do.
We do, okay. Okay, uh, let me see. I don't, I don't vote, but we have three people that can.
You do vote, but for anything to pass, we will take all four.
Okay.
As yay votes for anything to pass.
Okay. Okay, well, let me see. We have some public comments. Cheryl? You ready to speak?
Yes, we're gonna do it together.
Okay. And what is your name?
Claire Holm.
Okay. Thanks for being here.
Of course, would you prefer us standing in the place?
You can use that. It actually gets you better on the video exchange, did he?
Oh, okay. And so we are here as community members and hoping to lead the effort for our community garden. There's a lot of reasons why we think the community garden was thrive in Wood Creek. One of them being it was one of the most popular things that folks said they wanted in their community. And the other being, I have small children. A garden is actually really intergenerational. If you think about it, I got my love of gardening by gardening with my grandfather. And so really, it's something, unlike some other projects that are also really important, there, this, everyone can participate in. And so we think that's a really valuable and part of my community garden makes sense. I have, we have distributed kind of all the reasons why and the next steps. And I won't, of course, read to you all because I know you can read yourself. And but we could talk through the specifics of it, but one of the things that we would ask for your guidance on and permission for is to use the semi space outside of City Hall. Then to start kind of a, what I like to say is like a minimally valuable product, like a little startup and community garden for a temporary amount of time. The reason for that is because we want to make sure, even though people put it on the survey, that it is still very interesting, their participation. We can obviously work out a lot of the kinks on a smaller scale than we could after we've invested a lot of time and volunteer resource to build something out. And I'm at a different location for a much bigger garden. And so that's kind of the overview of why we're here sitting and chatting with you all. I don't know if you've had a chance to read what we shared with you all. Okay, perfect. If you have specific questions about what was in there, we're happy to talk through some of the logistics and our next steps. And or answer any of our questions.
Yes, what's your name?
Claire Holmer. I can kind of echo what she just said, but yes, we would love to be able to utilize a space here at City Hall if that is available just to get the garden up and running. Our interest, kind of get it, our starter garden, if you will. And then work with not only local businesses, local residents, volunteers, but also as sponsors of this community garden. So we really minimal ask for the, or from the city or for the city itself rather than, you know, other than the land, but also we'll provide a box or have a box fee for each garden to help offset the costs. I know obviously water is a huge thing here in Wood Creek as well, just in general. To offset the cost of the monthly service charge or what will you? And we have little kids who'd love to get them outside. We're very excited about the playground, but we'd love to get our hands dirty and grow something, watch it develop. And also use the space in the long, you know, long term as a way to bring community together. On a social level, but also a learning environment, not only for our little kids that are learning about native plants, learning, you know. Where am I going? Yeah, I mean, I think there's a huge amount of, again, like we, when you think about the emerging regional aspect, there's folks in the community that may not want the garden, but they have it, they have their own, but they have a master gardener that can share their information with other community members. And I think honestly, that space is the, really the perfect space because of the water source and the parking availability. So we've talked with some of those here about lots of different spaces that would make sense or could make sense. And that being, that's the best way. Most ideal.
Okay, well, thank you guys. Appreciate it. Um, I think, why don't we go and move under new business number five, especially possible acts in the creation of community garden, et cetera. Let's go ahead and leave that up and discuss that now. That's Chris Grummer and Councilmember Grummer, Councilmember Hines. That's your agenda item regarding proceeding.
I'd like to separate it, actually, and complete the motion. So I'm gonna proceed with the first motion and that is I mean that we approve the creation of a community garden here at City Hall.
Five seconds. Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Sure, it's your motion, so if you can leave the discussion or if you can see the one or two candidates, both your motions, so.
If you don't mind, Councilmember Grummer. So if you all will turn to page, excuse me for not having advanced the submission for these ladies. Is eighty seven. So if you turn to page eighty seven in your packet, there's other materials in the community garden that we'll get to, but I think just to kind of explain their public comment a little bit better, that this was, would be a good starting point. So essentially, we have addressed the fact that on the comp plan, community garden was highly rated. These two citizens have spearheaded the movement to get going on it. When we reviewed land possibilities and land usage, again, we run into the concept that Wood Creek has limited public green space and available land. Especially with the development of the parks going on right now, we didn't really want to conflict with any of those projects or get in the way of them or trying to start up something in the same spaces. So what we did was we actually realized that there's a lot of land here at City Hall that is underutilized and available for community engagement opportunities. This space in particular that we're looking at is actually already fenced in. It's this fenced rock area beside the shed. There's minimal storage of materials in there at this time, nothing that's highly valuable or risking theft. If it was stored outside of it, that would be fine. It's literally just to hide visuals at this time period. And as the ladies mentioned, this would actually just be a starter garden. Because Mayor Raskin and myself have already coordinated with Camp Young Judea for volunteers over the summer. They have a series of six sessions of around eighteen high school age, strong back volunteers ready to work for the city to build an actual garden, which we are proposing right under the water tower in an area that can't be developed or used for anything else. Everything would be in raised beds. The starter garden would feature beds, like I said, that are raised that could be transferred to the secondary final garden whenever we're ready for that. Camp Young Judea is willing to match or contribute materials in addition to the labor, and they're establishing a final number for that. We have opportunities to generate funds through the box charges. And we're gonna be talking to aquitects about potentially setting up a tap over there at the final garden so that we don't have to use the tap here at City Hall. And then there's water conservation measures we've been discussing, such as like installing rainwater collection. Again, the goal is not for the city to pay for any of this or do anything for any of this. The goal is that this is a volunteer citizen-led effort, and these two ladies have graciously offered their time to begin the hard work of getting it off the ground. Both of them have experience in PR, specifically launching large projects and kind of managing that kind of stuff. So they have. I am correct, right? I'm not, oh, okay, yeah. So they have this a very relevant background specifically for this project to get it off the ground. And then, so if you look at your page, they wrote this page. You have their vision statement, the goals. You have an outline there for the starter garden that would be in that fenced area. You have a timeline and next steps. I've already actually spoken to the owners of Wimberly Gardens, and they're interested in a, in a partnership and discussion, discussing the parameters. I have not approached King Feed yet. There's also the Boy Scouts of America. They have to have volunteer projects. Many seniors at the high school have to have volunteer projects. Councilmember Grummer did a great job of providing additional supplementary materials so you all could see what it would possibly look like. There's like an application there for joining the garden from over. We would, they would develop one for us.
Hi, there.
Morning.
Um, there's additional just statistics there about, you know, the benefits to gardening, how it benefits all ages. Everything you need there to kind of support this item. So what we're asking council. What we're asking council to do today is approve the use of the city land, and that's it.
Okay, the other discussion, Chris, what else? You mentioned she covered it well.
The real me.
But I do want to mention that my sample regulations, I disagree with them a lot. So for them, there's lots of things. So we're gonna leave that in your hands. And I have complete confidence in you too. I agree too, and it was a great discussion, and so I really appreciate your enthusiasm. Want to add anything?
Yes, I think this will obviously be my job. I want to go over that's not really gonna cost us anything and in that, okay, the city is giving the land availability and I suppose water.
So we have several different opportunities to offset that, one of which being the box rental fee. So because those boxes are being donated and the soil would be donated, the fee really, for me, is two things. One, offsetting the cost of water, and two, for accountability. If you've paid a nominal fee of fifty or a hundred dollars per piece, then you're much more likely to show up and maintain it than if you've paid nothing. And so that's one of the ways. And then we're also looking at ways to fundraise to then offset the cost of water. So our hope is that that would not be a responsibility of the city.
Okay, and this is a starting set, but how many people will be able to participate? How will you, will you lottery or sign up or what does that cost?
So the area that we're starting with is quite small. And when you measure out kind of a sizable or meaningful box, you can really stretch eight to ten, which is and that's going to help to gauge interest, knowing that we're hoping to build the future. We can then put people that signed up and don't, if you will, onto the waiting list for the larger space.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Let everybody go first, and then we'll come back for seconds. So, under the rules. Just a couple of things. I like the idea. The main thing I want to make sure is that we don't put any more work in staff. These guys are about to hear of their, I mean, if it's kind of a turnkey thing, you guys are gonna pick and run with it. I think it's wonderful.
Yeah, that's the deal for the goal. We don't, we want to provide this for the community on city property, but we don't want to have to ask for anything other than the water source and the land.
Yeah, I guess what's it for staff in terms of existing materials that are out there in the interior? What would say about that?
I have no idea.
Okay.
We can put it along the side of the the shed, or we can just roll it out and leave it in the open.
Some of it is, you know, it's, it's, the thing with the barricades and stuff that we barricaded the road in times of flooding. So is there any way they can work around that stuff or?
I think if we need, if we need to leave things in that area, we can definitely work it into the layout of the gardens, whether, you know, whether it's a corner of the space or having it in, not in use, but having it in the area. I think we can definitely work together to make that work. Absolutely.
Yeah, that might change the scale a little bit initially, you know, trying to make room for everything. So, okay, not done. You guys had a follow up?
Well, Mayor Raskin and I went and looked at the space, and it's actually pretty open. There's very little stuff in there. And then along the back of City Hall where AC Unit is, there's actually the enough space to store the barricades and things that are currently in there. And again, this is temporary. This is not, I mean, we're looking at the, the boy, that not the boys, no, sorry, CYJ is going to be working in June and July. So that's the amount of time that we're talking about where there wouldn't be of progress out of that space, if that makes sense. And then, I mean, it is possible to still set up a garden in there. My concern would then be protecting city materials. So I would personally think it would be of us to move them out. And then we were talking about the value of the things stored there. The asphalt that's stored out in the open is actually of higher value than anything behind the fence. So that's just something to consider, that we store actual valuable materials out already. So we could use them. There's also space on the other sides of the fence to temporarily store stuff outside the fence out of public view that is not in the way of anything as well. Though, again, it's just temporary.
Okay, anybody else, Chris? Um, so to cost, I understand that there's, you wish to do everything. It's all over here and everything. Personally, because it is the number one wish for parks by the citizens, I'm fine with the city putting some money towards the ultimate fencing, the big facts, once you build a big location. I'm fine with the city putting money towards that because we're putting lots of money towards the playground, which is number two on the list. So, and I know a fence to ultimately isn't that much. So that's just my opinion. Let me ask you.
I've got kind of a silly question, but inside garden, is there adequate sunshine there? I mean, is it?
It's actually almost full sun zone, almost, yeah.
Okay.
With a small red bit of shade.
Yeah, it's about, it's ten AM. It's about late, maybe, because there's the shed.
Water is. We just have two questions, or kind of on the money side and protecting the city. Now, you're gonna be charging a fee for these boxes, and who's gonna be collecting that fee?
Like a rental fee, I mean, if.
Is it, is it gonna be you, or is it a committee, or how is the money being accounted?
Yeah, so we are, we're the heads of the committee right now, honestly, because we're founding it. And if your concern is protecting the citizens' money, we can definitely partner with City Council in some way, if that makes you feel better.
Normally, when the city donates land or that, usually there's some accountability, and usually it's just an annual work to City Council, just, hey, this is how much we brought in, this is how much we spent, this is where it went to. So my, my recommendation, if you did anything, just make sure there was an annual recording of money, money received and money spent. Just so there's no, I, I know it's not, the city is involved, but it is our land, so we just need some accountability. And normally that's, we, usually around our budget time, usually in August. Just come in and it's just one sheet of paper, like a ballot sheet or, not even ballot sheet, but you know what?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that'd be my, I mean.
Anybody else?
You said two things. Was there another, or no? I just know sometimes we get going too.
Uh, one is taking the money and two was the report. So.
Well, we're ready to motion. Okay, so the motion, can you, you said the motion.
Motion to approve the creation of a community garden here at City Hall.
Transferring. We have a motion. We have a second. Time for the vote. We're gonna.
Mayor Pro Tem Brent Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Linaeah Bailey.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see.
Yeah, I give a progress report. And I'm, I'm happy to help with whatever you'll need.
I certainly do that. I'll be joining you in a little group here. All right. Bye.
You guys can stay if you want to.
I'll, I'll watch the live thing.
Okay.
See you later.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody. Let's go on unfinished business, just a kind of a programming note here. I've got a lead of five forty-five, but we should have plenty of time, I think, for all that. But that'll be a hard stop for me.
Mayor Pro Tem, sorry, but we weren't finished with five. Do you want to just circle back?
Oh, that's right, yeah. The dog park part there. Let's go and take care of that now, what we're talking about. So that's, I think that's either you or Chris's motion, which one?
It was, that's me. We partnered on a community garden. A dog park is on me. So my motion is that council create a dog park on the south intersection of Ranch Road twelve and Wood Creek Drive and the park space that is there.
Well, I have a second.
Second. So if you turn to page eighty-eight in your packet.
Say eighty or eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. Um, you have a, a visual there of the possible location for a dog park. I know it's kind of tiny, I apologize, but it's just giving you a kind of an indicator. So the location I'm talking about is across from Veterans Memorial Plaza. There's a walking trail tying into Winter's Mill there already. And we have this little sliver of land that is designated a park space. So if we did move forward with anything, we do need to involve the parks board, so this isn't a once and done item today. But the idea would be we could forward them the suggestion. But essentially, we have a park. We have very little uses for it. Whenever the Parks Board looked at it, they determined a playground, I couldn't really go there. They determined that the, the land wasn't really great for any sort of exercise equipment or anything. So we have this excellent green space, and a way to preserve it and leave it a green space is by making it a dog park. Dogs only want green space. We would need minimal fencing. If you look at other dog parks, it's not extravagant fencing because it's really still the responsibility of the owner to monitor the dog. We would need a receptacle likely for the poop that's collected, but you can also just provide bags. It's not uncommon for people to have to take and dispose of the poop themselves at dog parks. I've seen in other cities, if there's not always a park trash can, but we could consider that. So that's it. It's minimal and basic in the city. It's one of the things in the comp plan that people were interested in. And again, the idea is centered around community engagement spaces and utilizing our park spaces. And again, like taking it off the comp plan to-do list of like what citizens want. So as far as today, the action is to create the dog park. That is vague on purpose because I believe we could amend this motion to see if the Parks Board would like to take this on, to see, you know, amend the motion to wait till next budget season to reflect on an amount that could be put towards the fence. We could consider talking to the CYJ volunteer group about working on this as well because they want, they want projects and they're concerned about having enough work for their volunteers. And then, like we talked about, the Boy Scouts of America need volunteer work. We could even potentially get materials donated. I mean, there, the possibilities are endless. The city just has to be willing to start the conversation.
Okay, anyone else? Linaeah?
Well, I wish it were closer to my house. But other than that, I'm just, I would like to be involved in this. I think it's a great idea. I've been a dog lover and I've been to many dog parks. Some have better facilities, and so I think it's a great idea. But I'd like to, I'd like to contribute if possible.
Good, Chris. So I'll be the unpopular person in the room. So when you look at the list of the things that the people have said they've wanted for our city in their parks, gardens, community gardens were thirty-three percent. Playgrounds were twenty-one percent of the respondents. And it was a tie for nothing in their parks was the other twenty-one percent. And then Community Pool was ranked twelve. And then Dog Park was nine percent. That's way down the list for me. So I could be more on board if what you're saying is there is no cost. Um, the, but in order to, in speaking in support of dog parks, um, the things I would like, during, I did some research, and one of the things that they said when it comes to designing dog parks in a city from a city planning point of view is we don't have them at the entrance. It actually specifically says off to the side and in the back of the front of the community. I was actually thinking the plot next to La Roca, which the city owns. Cause that's off and back. Um, but I would be open to sending this to parks to have them discuss it and bring it back up proposal in English.
Um, I, I kind of, I sort of go on with what you're saying. First of all, I'm really in favor of a dog park and, um, cause I'm, you know, man, I'm crazy about dogs. And I think it kind of goes hand in hand with, with the whole parks concept. Uh, Wood Creek North is really nice one up there, and it's nothing fancy. It's just a dog can't get out and they keep playing. And it's pretty nice. I'm with you, though, would be, maybe we ought to have the parks people work on this. Uh, I don't know. Uh, that may not be a bad idea. I'm sure the concern about being right up front there, uh, is boy, somebody gets out, they're in trouble immediately, you know, big trouble. Uh, so I don't know if there's another park that we can kind of carve a little piece out and make that part the dog park. Maybe that's what the Parks Board looks at, but I am concerned about that, because some dogs will find a way to get away from you. Um, let me ask you this, would the walk trail, if we did put it over there, the walking trail would not be affected, right? Okay. Um, other than that, they're pretty simple. It's, it's walk it off, you, you know, have some bags, you got a receptacle and, you know, uh, it's, it's not that difficult. But that's my concern. I don't know, I'm crazy about the, uh, the location. That bothers me a little bit. Um, you guys have any thoughts?
I do.
Okay.
Um, for a, a staff perspective, uh, I would, I would suggest not passing motions that have no backing to it, other than create a dog park. And then you send it to parks, well, you've already had the demand to build a dog park at that place. A better thing would just send it to parks. Let them look at the viable options that they are, that's around here. They can, may come up with that, that down there. They may come with somewhere, somewhere else. Come back with some numbers, fencing, sanitary disposal, and ground maintenance, mulch, or whatever needs to be done, and, and not have a unfunded mandate that we have a dog park out there, but we have no specifics. It's a lot better if council would vote on specifics of a ordinance of a motion rather than pass something and then figure out the details afterwards. It's better for staff to know the details of what's being presented, instead of passing it and figuring out all the details afterwards. So that is my only thing as staff. I love dog parks. I don't care where it goes, but just as a procedural for us, because once you voted, we're having a dog park somewhere. And then it's gonna be on us to do the, do the dog park. And so without any specifics, this item would have to come back to council numerous times in order for the equipment, the funding, and everything else. And so it would be a lot better, I think, in my mind, for staff, if we could have a total proposal of a dark dog park, come out of parks, be presented to council, and then council can take the recommendation and the numbers and the facilities that the parks have come up with, and dissect that and come up with your own suggestion.
Deborah?
I agree with everything I was saying. I have no problem with any of it. I will say the only reason why I selected that location was viable spaces. The La Roca lot is not a park space. It is city-owned property, kind of like under the water tower, which doesn't mean we can't do that. It just changes the that we should, we would need to first create it as a park space, so just the idea for if that's what Parks Board decides. They know this, though, because they went through it with the COZAC grant, so Pat Rollins definitely knows. The other issue with the La Roca lot is that it is um, very wooded. So there is a significant amount of like land work that would need to be done, which would add to the cost versus the, across from Veterans Memorial Plaza, is essentially self-maintaining, low-level, uh, greenery that, um, I mean, I, I don't even believe y'all know that area.
It does, you know.
It does sometimes, yeah, okay.
What's about, like, all the other parts?
And around under the trees.
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, it's just, it's already a grassy area that's mowed, and it already has parking, which was the primary reason. I was like, well, this is great, because there's already parking established here, which we learned through Parkview is a very expensive add-on to, um, implement at a later date. So that, that was my suggestion there. Um, I will say the reason I didn't develop the dog park idea more is I really didn't know how we would feel about it. And I'm just hesitant to commit a lot of my time to something if I don't, if, if I don't think council could be on board. But right now, it sounds like we could be on board. We would need more details. So I'm open to amending the motion. And so what do we think the amendment should be? Amendment that council is in support of a dog park and like the Parks Board to take this matter up?
I'd just say, I, I would, I would make a motion to, um, have parks, uh, look at, uh, establishing a dog park in the city of Wood Creek.
Okay, I will withdraw my previous motion and issue the motion that we direct the Parks Board to look at viable options for creating a dog park.
Do we have a second? Linnea, seconds. Is that good for you?
Yeah, that's, that sounds great.
All right. Any, uh, any other discussion?
Well, La Roca is closer to me, but.
What's that?
La Roca is closer to me.
Yeah, I hear you.
Anyone think that door?
Yes. However, having a frisky dog, open, little open space and a little bit of green area.
That was a wild one, man, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Drummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Frithen Brent Foley?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Let's go into, uh, back on top with our unfinished business, the discussion that possible action on providing direction to the ordinance review committee that's, Councilmember Hines, that's your motion.
I move that council provide new direction to the ordinance review committee.
Oh, several. One second.
So there's no. All right.
You ready to go?
Yeah, sorry. Um, so this item was submitted on behalf of the O R C. They have, um, basically finished everything that they had pending. And the previous directions from council were a little too macro perspective, um, for them. They would prefer new direction, and specifically they are asking that we maybe pick exact ordinances or areas to look at and to focus on things that directly impact the citizens in public, and, uh, kind of avoid anything that's, um, more under the purview of a legal team. Specifically, like, when I brought up the, the, um, Board of Adjustment, that's overwhelming for them, because they do not feel qualified to address that. Whenever we're talking about the animal control portion, portion of the code, they feel very qualified to provide direction and input. So they're just, they're seeking new direction from council, and without us, their new chairperson basically plans to continue to proceed on his own unless we would like to say something about that even. So that's where we're at.
Okay. Linnea, do you have anything to say? What, uh, do you have any areas you'd like them to focus on?
Um, no, this has been of people's purview, and so, um, I don't have any really, I'm just a patient right now.
Okay, Chris?
Um, I agree, like, James is, I think, has a good head on himself, and I think the, the O R C has a great committee going on. I think that them setting the standards of looking at things that the people, that interest the people or affect the citizens directly, um, is broad enough, but specific enough.
Are you done? Uh, do you, do you have any input on that?
I do.
Okay.
All right. Um, O R C is not allowed for the ordinance that was written, written to come up with whatever they want to work on. The only thing that they can work on is that which council gives them. So it's great that James, you know, wants to go work on whatever he sees fit, but that's, that's not allowed in the ordinance of the O R C. It is only stuff that is, is directed to them.
We are actually in that discussion of directing something to, which is, we can say a very specific things that affect the citizens of the city.
That is, that, that is, look at anything and everything, and I would recommend to get set. I would say exactly, exactly an ordinance or a part of an ordinance that you feel is troublesome, rather than say, look at our entire code.
I'm not saying look at your entire code.
The, I'm, I'm sorry, I guess I don't understand what, what your, part of the code you're talking about.
Well, so just to pause briefly and back up a little bit. So council provided direction to O R C already and asked them to, essentially, the first was to begin the full review of the code. Then it was to specifically start with the outline of the code. Um, they have essentially kind of gone on their own. There was some confusion about what they were supposed to be doing. I know the ordinance says that their purpose is to review things sent to them by council. And I realize that you have already pulled it up, and you're likely gonna read it to us here in just a second. I think the goal today is to give them very specific direction. And, um, I hear what you say, that you don't recommend something more broad, but that is a recommendation, not a mandate. So council does have the right to give direction to O R C as we see fit.
No, yeah, if y'all wanna give them, look at whatever, that is fine. I'm just warning you that as a staff, that, and as a council, that is
I hear you.
tough to keep in line.
Well, let me ask you this, um, and we're.
It's so specific.
Hold on a sec, okay. Let me answer this. Uh, does council have any specific recommendations for this committee, uh, to work on? And Linnea, I think, do you have anything? You don't have anything?
No.
Okay. Do you have anything? Specifically, you want to?
Well, I was just gonna read the ordinance, and I can make some suggestions if you'd like me to read the actual ordinance. So the ordinance review committee shall, shall meet to consider amending, creating, and rescinding ordinances that they have been tasked to consider by the city council. To accomplish these tasks, the ordinance review committee shall study, investigate, and develop a recommendation or plan in response to the tasks given to them by council, and under any deadlines established by the council. The ordinance review committee should be prepared to provide monthly reports at regular meetings. That's it. That's the specificity and vagueness of what's there. Right now, I believe they would like to take up animal control and fireworks.
Okay, so specifically, we've got animal control, fireworks. Uh, Chris, do you have anything specific you'd like them to, like to suggest that they work on?
No, it's not.
Yeah, I don't really either. Um,
why don't we start there? With animal control and fireworks.
I'm open to that, and I would just like to request that council in general be considered of the fact that we do have this body who is meant to do this work for us. So if we could think about things, especially as we're running into them of like, oh, let's send this to O R C, because, um, as citizens, they have really valuable inputs to give us in direction.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right. So what the direction I think that the council has today is that, you know, they wanna work on, uh, animal control and fireworks, and I think the direction to council, well, you wanted to amend your motion to specify?
Yeah, I will specify animal control and fireworks.
Okay. Do I have a second for that amendment?
I have a second.
All right. Are we ready to vote on the amendment? If you, if we need more?
So just to clarify, she, Councilmember Hines, her thing was to move that council provide new direction to O R C in beginning with animal control and fireworks. Does that mean you want that phrase?
As specifying.
Specifying.
I meant to specify animal control and fireworks.
So I don't know if that's a new motion or if that's an amended motion.
Well, since you had restated it as the, um, body member conducting the meeting, then she can make her amendments. Once you've stated, then it would be a formal amendment.
Okay, so then we vote on amendment first, or?
There is not.
Okay, so we just follow the motion. And the motion being, um, did we direct, um, new direction to the ordinance review committee to look specifically at animal control and fireworks, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, ready to vote?
Councilmember Chris Drummer?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Frithen Brent Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Okay, uh, let's take a look at number two. That's the next one under unfinished business. Again, that is Councilmember Hines, again, item, and you have a floor.
I move that council provide specific action for the ad hoc work group to take in regards to the first packet of information that they have prepared.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, go ahead, Dan, with your discussion.
Um, essentially, the ad hoc work group is meeting, uh, this week. We will be collectively meeting for the last time about the subdivisions draft from their, uh, Councilmember Drummer and myself plan to have one more general meeting of looking at this large pack and material altogether, like pronounced and just kind of double, triple checking, but essentially we have, uh, site development subdivision, applications for both uh, an E T J regulation and a chapter on water, um, how do we rephrase it? It was environmental protection. We rephrased it to better align with state code guidance. So it's essentially environmental protection, but we're gonna put that in quotes, conservation, water conservation. Anyway, so there's a, a large pack of materials that's ready to go somewhere. There's been ample debate about the proper procedure, even last week. Um, or actually, maybe two weeks ago, City Manager Rule and myself were discussing this. So basically, the goal of this item is for us to create a very clear map for the projection of this material, so that everyone has a really nice understanding of the trajectory. Meaning, where does it go next? And then from there, what is the expectation? And what is, where, you know, what is the path this material should travel on? Does it come back? So the two suggestions to consider right off the bat are, does it come back to council right away? Which was kind of the existing decree. Do we send it to legal right away? Um, in my last conversation with City Manager Rule, um, and we, if you'd like to interrupt, please do and correct me, but essentially, there was this concept of if we send it to legal review now, legal review must occur before it comes back to council after P and Z, so we could potentially be paying for legal review twice. So that's a cost um, risk that we would need to be willing to take. Um, or just keep into mind, you know, if we, if we do send it to legal first. Sorry, that's my school bus stop for my kids, but, um, anyway, so basically, it's just, you know, that group is ready for the next motion. So we need, we need direction. We need to know where to send this packet. Where does it go next?
Okay, Chris?
Um, my thinking is that we council sends the ad hoc documents to P and Z. And then after P and Z, get their legal review. And then they come to council after that.
So declared by you mean ad hoc gives it?
Yeah, ad hoc gives it. One at a time, please. You're recognizing, no, you're saying you wanna go to P and Z, then to legal, then to council.
Correct. So ad hoc would be sending it to P and Z.
Okay, cause you said council, send it to P and Z.
Oh, I did, I did apologize. Um, ad hoc sends it to P and Z directly. Um, P and Z makes any edits or changes they wish to make. Then they send it to legal. He does the full review, and then it comes to council, and then they can make edits with legal in, in the room. So that the legal can say, hey, now that we can't touch that, or hey, yeah, you can touch that, or.
Linnea, do you have any?
Well, I was a couple of things. One, um, it does sound like we're doing double on legal that way, rather than going from P and Z back to council. Then to legal. Uh, but the other thing, if you can give me some clarification, as to why this procedure needs. But the other thing, if you can give me some clarification as to why this procedure needs to take place.
Public hearings?
Okay, but why we need, I'm, I'm just learning. So why does the council need to direct in this way?
Yeah, I, let me ask this. Do you have any comments?
No.
Okay.
It, it automatically goes to P and Z next. I think that's the lead, that's the smart thing to do. P and Z will have to have a public hearing on the ordinances that get presented to them. And then once they go through the public hearing, before it comes to council, we need to make sure that legal has had a chance to look at that. Because the P and Z has already had their, their meaning, it will come, it won't have to go to P and Z. Basically, it's out of their hands. And council gets the final decision on whatever legal council came up with, whatever's legal or not. And then also council will have to have a public hearing as well.
Let me, let me speak briefly again. Is that not the normal way the ordinances are handled? You know, they go to P and Z.
Right, that's the first normal way.
I heard for something, anything that touches on? Yeah, okay.
Just to be clear, that portion is not what we were discussing and outlining. We, we are very aware that anything under P and Z's purview goes to P and Z and has a public hearing. And then the new bit of information that was really established was it was mandatory legal review after that prior to it brought back to council. What we're actually discussing is what the ad hoc group does next. Because there is no procedure for that that's specifically outlined. And what is currently waiting is that it's for it to come back to council. And then there's been debate already among this group of people about, no, we should send it to legal right away. We should have legal already reviewing it. And then there was the issue of like, well, then we're double dipping with legal. Is that the right call? So what's, what, where should the ad hoc group pass off their large packet of materials to next? Does it go to council? Does council want to look at it before P and Z? Does an ad hoc work group have any right to submit things to P and Z? This is the reason for the discussion. Basically, we need a direct motion for the ad hoc work groups.
Correct, and I don't believe.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be rude.
Yeah, we, we actually need this motion because ad hoc can't send it anywhere but back to council. So if we wish to make the decision to bypass this and go directly to P and Z, council has to make that decision.
Right, that would be the motion to have the ad hoc group send 154 plus to P and Z. That would be the motion.
You accept that? That motion or an amendment or whatever it would be?
Well, he can't make motions or amendments.
Right.
I'm open to whatever you want to do, that's, we just need a motion. We just need direction. And it seems silly, people seem like, why would we bring it back to council? The only reasoning for bringing it back to council that I see is that we have new council. And they have not had a direct vote or involvement in this process. When we created the ad hoc work group, we had different members on council. And so that would be the only thing, but it's going to come back to them at the end and they have the final say. So.
Okay, well, let me, let me, I'll make two cents worth in. If, if the normal way is to send it to P and Z, and P and Z passes it to legal and the staff, and then it comes to council. I mean, she's doing it the normal way. I mean.
Well, I don't think there's a normal precedent. The normal way, I guess, would be that, so the original direction given to ad hoc committee was to work on these documents and then bring them back to council.
And we're free to deviate from that though and go to P and Z or legal or not.
This, this new motion would be, hey, you don't have to come to us, let's send it to ad hoc directly because we know we'll get to it, you know. So it's.
Okay.
The question is, do we wish to have new members dig into all these documents and then send them to P and Z?
Yeah.
My concern, well, not my concern really. My thinking is that council will go through all these really large documents, make changes, then they send it to P and Z. And then P and Z makes the changes, then it come back to council, then they change it back.
By that time, we've got gray bears and whatnot. Well, okay, so the motion, what was the original motion? I'm sorry, Linnea, go ahead.
I, not being one of the new council and not familiar with this, I do like the idea of being able to immerse and familiarize myself with this process. But I can do it within whatever the group has decided. But I feel like this is one area where I'm lacking.
And they're big documents, we're all going to have to take our time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, the, the main motion was. I'm sorry.
Man?
Sure.
I move that council provide specific action for the ad hoc work group to take regarding the first packet of information that they have prepared.
I move to amend for the ad hoc work group to send their documents directly to planning zone for their review and recommendation and public hearing. And then from there, to legal review, and then to council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay.
Okay, so.
Does city manager have an issue?
No, no, that's, that, that's a perfect motion. That's, yeah, no, that's.
Oh, well, I'm done.
No, that is perfectly, that is the course that it's going to, it would go, but yes, so that is nothing wrong with that.
And I didn't demand in my motion that council has a public hearing because they may choose otherwise.
That's why I'm saying it's perfect, it's the perfect motion.
So it's not, don't we mess it up?
Yeah.
Any more?
Right.
Me.
We have a second, right? Okay.
I heard a transition. So the ad hoc work group is to send documents directly to P and Z for review and recommendation for public hearing. And from there to legal to review and then to the council.
Okay, thanks on that. Let's move to a new business, number three. Oh, I gotta go again.
It's gonna go twice.
So the amendment. Council member Deborah Heinz?
Aye.
Proton, Mayor Proton Brett Foley?
Aye.
Excuse me. Council member Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Council member Chris Garmer?
Aye.
And the main motion? Okay, main motion.
Mayor Proton Brett Foley?
Aye.
Council member Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Council member Chris Garmer?
Aye.
Council member Deborah Heinz?
Aye.
All right, the perfect motion. That is quite good. That's true. Okay, let's look at number, the new business, number three, review neighbor to neighbor and neighborhood watch initiatives. This was initially Mayor Roscoe's item. Is he able to talk to us or is he?
He is trying to come in on.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, I, I mean, number and everything was near, dear to my heart, as many of you know. We got off and got a, got a start on it, but not, you know, sort of, sort of fizzled with COVID and everything. I'd just like to see it get back up and running. I don't know what council member Hambrick, you know, has.
Hold on, Jeff, we lost you.
It's all right.
Can you go to the restroom while you are filling with the.
Could we have a recess? Hey, Jeff, we're going to check about five to four so many recess. Yeah, for nation.
And, you know, I have an obligation to lie slow, so.
What time?
I really should be there at five thirty.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
What do you need me to do?
I didn't know he was going to present.
No, it's not your fault. What's that?
We didn't, you didn't touch anything, did you?
No, I'm trying to get the key. I didn't do that.
Well, no, no, I was just, I don't know why his voice locked.
I mean.
We didn't do anything.
Whatever you did seemed to work. I can see myself on the screen. Can you hear me? Wave if you can hear me.
Well, not as large. Trying to get the voice up. Can you hear us, Jeff?
I can hear you. Can you hear me again?
Hear us, Jeff?
It's on his end.
You can hear us? You can hear us?
Yes, I can, I can hear you. Can you hear me? Hey, somebody?
Not what Tara, I remember.
Hello, 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 hello? No?
Well, I wouldn't read.
Hello, Jeff?
Hey. So I can still hear y'all fine. I think you can't hear me, right?
Right, you, you were coming through very clear, then all of a sudden.
Yeah, okay, so you need to, on whatever computer is hooked up to the Zoom, you need to go to the audio settings and, and click on where you're feeding the, what the speaker is. You want the speaker to be either the, the TV or the, or the center camera.
You're on.
You hear me now?
Okay, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Hold on, first, one second, Brent is not in the room.
Well, I know, yeah, y'all took a quick, y'all took a quick recess.
You might hide the chat.
Do I?
Hide the chat.
Hide the chat. What is this, much a? Where do you find that one?
You ready to come on recess? Yes.
Go back to the meeting.
Ready, everybody? Come out of recess. Ready? Linnea, you ready? Okay?
Yeah, I'll help you after the meeting.
All right, I'll drop you there. Back out of recess.
I have to say, this is very odd.
Jeff, can you hear us okay?
I hear you fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. So why don't you present this and then tell us what you want us to do?
Yeah, so the, the neighbor to neighbor and, and also the network watch programs were kicked off under, under Mayor Whitehead's council with Bob Hamrick, council member Hamrick, leading the charge. I was supposed to be the sort of, sort of co-chair on that. We never really, never really got it too far off the ground. I don't know how much information, data, signup cards, whatever that council member Hamrick, you know, has, or whether he's turned that all over to the city and it, you know, it's somewhere in our city files. I do have some, some work that I did on my own on the strip of Augusta Drive that I adopted as block captain or whatever you want to call it. But I think the neighbor to neighbor program especially is something that would be very helpful. We found out again during the ice storm, just how great it is to have people in touch that are, that are physically, you know, like geographically close to one another. And, and I'd just like to continue to work towards a better formalization of the neighbor to neighbor program. And I was, I was hoping council member Hamrick would be in the workshop so we can talk about it some more. But that's just what I want to get on the table is that if, if y'all feel like it's something that we need to, you know, keep working on, I will, I will help in every way that I can. But I think probably just having Bob and the city manager and city secretary and me sit down together and just sort of see where it is and then go from there would be a good first step. On the neighborhood watch program, I just don't know where that ever went. That's, that's kind of the, you know, stick the sticker up in your window that, you know, I'm a, I'm a safe space home or something, I think. Or, or that, you know, we look out for our neighbors when they're out of town, which to me is just part of the neighbor to neighbor, you know, program. So I don't know exactly what they, what they thought about when they were talking about the, the neighborhood watch. But those are the two things. I appreciate your consideration.
Well, I'd like to do this. I'd like to change it a little bit. I'd like to hear from Kevin, from the city manager in terms of how the neighbor to neighbor program benefits them with their emergency preparedness and whatnot. Can you help us on that? Give us any other thoughts you might have.
Sure, now Jeff, Jeff, kind of hit on him. You've been talking about this for two, three months, I believe. I'm, I'm getting the neighbor to neighbor program up and going, up and going. Bob Hamrick started it when he was on council before and it kind of just died on the vine. I think it would be a great ideal for council member Hamrick, mayor DeFrasco, me and the city secretary to sit down and come up with some strategies on implementing this with the getting different quadrants, getting individuals to sign up, kind of of a framework to go. And then I think maybe then bring it in front of council and have a presentation up here. This is what we're going to do and do a big rollout to get everybody signed up. Is that what you feel, Jeff, as well, I mean, mayor?
Yeah, Kevin. No, that's pretty much, and, and I wish you would call me Jeff. But anyway, yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Chris, I move to take next steps for establishing the neighbor to neighbor program.
Second.
It can be, yeah, that's a perfect, you're, you're cheaper too.
Another perfect motion. Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second. Any other discussion on the end of Deborah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to suggest that y'all pick a specific date to launch the program and have an event touched to it. The other thing about the contacts that have been gathered thus far, that's been two years ago now. We have no way to verify that those people are so interested. Those are valid contacts, they live here. So as far as not, we need to do another movement of collecting more information, potentially even just using the city email address, you know, seeking signups again. And then my one thing with neighbor to neighbor that I've always kind of been hung up on is what do they do in between emergencies, right? And how do we keep that momentum going in between emergencies? Because we're not sitting around hoping and waiting for emergencies. And what I've noticed with these things is that I might sign up for something and then nothing happens for several years. Forget about it, lost my contact sheet, not really clear on what I'm supposed to do. So just kind of having like ongoing events to sort of keep that like stuff going and maybe giving them tasks as far as like organize this for spectacular or, you know, like just to kind of create like a cohesiveness in there. And he's Mayor DeFrasco's man.
Jeff? You know, I'm going to come back to you. Give me a second, okay?
Okay, sure, go ahead.
Linnea, did you have anything?
Well, just, there's a group of us that meet monthly, just social. So it's, excuse to have a party. Good idea.
Mr. Mayor?
No, all of those things, Deborah, are things that we've talked about in the past and, and recently, as we've talked about revamping this. There are some names of people that signed up two years ago that are not viable anymore. There are others that, that certainly are. There are new neighbors that have moved in since all this occurred. So there's all that, all that reshuffling. The, the, the goal for Bob and Kevin and Suzanne and me would be to sit down and say, okay, well, where did we get to? What can we do to, to get to the next step? And then how do we roll it out? So, so all of the things that you mentioned, Deborah, are exactly on mark and things that we've talked about and would be working toward.
Okay, well, we have a motion to proceed with that. And a second, do we have any additional discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Council member Linnea Bailey?
Aye.
Council member Chris Garmer?
Aye.
Council member Deborah Heinz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Brett Foley?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And if I might, um, any conversation about the neighborhood watch? Part of the same, same agenda item.
Okay, um, Councilmember Hines?
Personally, I think neighborhood watches are unappealing. Uh, and maybe that's just my own connotation about it. Uh, it feels a little like people up in your business, uh, a little like, uh, volunteer militia. Like, I, you know, I just, I, I would like to see neighbor to neighbor get all the energy because I think that that's a positive, uh, community forward concept. Neighborhood watch to me is a little bit more HOA slash, we have police presence here. So neighborhood watch typically serves instead of police presence because it's in areas where the police aren't controlling. Um, is where I've seen it before. We had one in my, one of my neighborhoods in Austin. And essentially, a lot of those people were also on the HOA board. And what it turned into was complaints about violations, deep restrictions, uh, rather than keeping anyone safe. So that's my, my worry with that program. I'm less on board with that, I'd consider personally.
Lenea, do you have a comment?
Just that I agree. I think it sounds a little militant and maybe not necessary.
Councilmember Gromer, do you have a comment? Stan? Okay, well, that's the, uh,
I, I totally agree. Thank you.
Say again?
I said I totally agree. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, okay, we have the, uh, we passed the motion, we discussed the neighborhood watch, and anything else on, on that, uh, agenda item?
No, I look forward to getting to work. Kevin, if we can get, you know, set a meeting, um, in the next couple of weeks.
Yes.
Nice shirt, by the way. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wow, nice view.
Now you're just making us mad. Where is that?
Um, we're outside of Woodville, Texas. This is a little private lake. We're Airbnb. Um, which, which it's, it's, it's really kind of stupid. Ten times better than my house. Okay, anyway, I'm sorry. We digress.
Well, good. All right. Well, have fun up there. Keep going, I guess. Um, all right, let's take a look at number four, under new business, discuss and take appropriate action on citizen mobility in City Wood Creek. Uh, Councilmember Gromer, that is your item. Ready to proceed?
Yeah, um, I want to let you know that I've been in a discussion with Grant Works and they're aware of Wood Creek's request to begin looking for grant opportunities as it relates to moving, helping move citizens out of the streets while walking. Um, most of the new research takes the position that a city should address citizen mobility, but that cars are simply one element of citizens moving from place to another place. Um, people bike, walk, et cetera. The city should consider all modes of transportation. Research shows that by doing so, the safety of citizens increases. Um, in the, in the packet, I know it's a huge packet, um, but I wanted, I highlighted specific elements. Um, but I wanted to introduce two possible grants for citizen mobility. These are the, right now, the two most obvious ones. Uh, though, given the recent statistics provided by Sniffel at our last meeting, the largest percentage of Wood Creek's population household income falls between twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand a year. This could actually help Wood Creek access other possible grants, such as reapplying for an, another community development block grant. Um, I didn't include that in my packet because I didn't have the statistics at the time. Beginning on page nine of the packet, you will find the tech stock transportation alternative set aside funding program. Now, all the applications in here, um, the date has passed. I'm thinking of the future. Um, this tech stock program is a, not a grant, but a reimbursement program. Meaning if we decided to install trails or sidewalks, um, then we apply and they would be reimbursed. But, uh, so also on your packet, I do apologize, page twenty-four through thirty-seven of the packet are repeat. Um, so let's go to page thirty-eight. And that shows you the comprehensive plan showing citizens interested in citizen's mobility. For the most pressing issues, it ranks number three after improving roadways, which is in the works. And number two, maintaining Wood Creek's character, which is something council has always taken into consideration at all times, on all issues before us. Um, page forty-two. Now, I'll let you read the comprehensive, but you know, well, okay, so I'm going to go on to the next grant because we're, I'm trying to keep you under the timeframe. Um, it's called the SS4A grant, Wood Creek. There, there. Page fifty-two. Um, I skipped over a tiny little grant, which is the Walk America or America Walks grant, which is a thousand five hundred dollars. But it's a supplemental grant for any kind of trails and, and et cetera. Uh, the SF4A grant has two components to it. It's actually two grants for one project. There's the first part, which is the planning and demonstration grant, meaning, uh, it would help fund for the engineering costs, the plans and everything you need, um, for walking trails or sidewalks, et cetera. Then the second grant would be implementation grant. You would apply to them separately. My thinking is, and again, this is deadline out in one T twenty, the beginning of twenty twenty-five. So we're way out in advance right now. But I believe we could begin thinking about, do we want to start including these grants? I wanted to present them in front of you. I've actually already contacted Grant Works to start investigating other ones. But I just wanted to put it all in front of you.
Man, I love it. I really do. Um, so if you're going to boil this down to a motion, you would, you would, what would it be?
Uh, discussion? Um, I have one more thing that I found interesting in my research. And this could be something to highlight to bring to staff's attention, or actually, Lenea, this could be something to you. On page fifty-seven, um, I highlighted a portion. There's something called the local government assistance program. And you will see that there's an opportunity that Texas requires the county to work with a city in any excess and to gain materials for roads. So counties required to give us supplies for our roads. So I'm like, oh, great.
No.
That could bring down the cost. Um, so I wanted to make sure that we get kind of that discussion going of the county going, hey, do you have excess supplies? Or it even suggests that they could buy new supplies for roads.
They hadn't helped with the engineering, the, the, yeah. Specifically, while we already did it with your drive, so it would have been a good one to.
Yeah.
There's the whole county uses the, or, you know.
Yeah. So I wanted to put those, so that was, that, that sheet just happened to have that thing on it as part of my research. So I wanted to bring in some people's attention and, um,
Do you have a motion for us, Chris?
I don't. It's, I think it's more at this point just to discuss it. I think we're all in agreement because it is a year out. Go ahead.
Deborah?
Um, I think the reason why, and I could be speaking for you too much here, but the reason why we don't necessarily need a motion now is because we've actually already authorized Grant Works to pursue any and all grants for us that fall under our curfew. So potentially, maybe we should have had those discussion before you got with them, but it doesn't actually matter because we've already authorized them to do this kind of work for us. So, um, I think it's, I mean, there's a huge, if you look at our most recent citizen survey, once again, the public con, the, the actual open-ended comments over and over, walking trails, walking trails, walking trails, nowhere to walk, concentrations aren't safe. So I think, you know, besides getting our roads done, to me, this is like number two. Like playground's big, that's three for me, um, but walking trails are like number two for me.
Yeah.
Um, Lenea, go ahead.
And another common comment is we want it, but we don't want it to come from our tax dollars. So this is the ideal, of coming, coming from a grant that, that isn't tax paid or about funded.
Yeah, I, I think that's right. Y'all see that we really want this, we don't want, you know, raise our, or spend our taxes on it. But, um, well, well, Chris, you've already talked to Grant Works and they know that we're interested in this, right?
Correct. So what it is, is I, in my discussion, so we've had discussions on what is, because they don't live here. So they're like, what do the citizens of Wood Creek want? And, you know, so we can begin trying to find strengths and things for that. And I just wanted to make sure, my recent discussion was, is trails and sidewalks in, on your list?
Yeah.
And it goes, well, it is, but now that you re, you reemphasize it, I'm moving it up in the list. I'm like, great.
So you don't believe in us to do anything, especially when you need consensus from us that, hey, we want to explore that. And we want to make sure that the Grant Works knows that that's a, a part of our priorities.
Right.
And you've kind of done that.
And I kind of done that, but I also wanted to maybe possibly, because it is a year away and it could be two years away. Just kind of keep it on our radar because one of these directions, the, the TA version, the first one, which is a reimbursement grant, we would have to come up with the action plan ourselves. So if we don't want to go that route, or if we wish to go that route, we have to kind of think, well, maybe we need to start putting things together. And also, the other consideration that we could be doing over the next year is we start involving, because a lot of these applications require a kind of citizen consensus of where they want them, or do they want them? So we could start having possible town halls, you know, but again, we have a year.
Yeah. Well, do you need the council to take any action other than just, you know, have an opportunity to, to discuss this? Do you need us to do anything?
Not at this moment. I think we could come back to it.
Okay. And you have enough for you to, to do what, what, uh, what, what we've talked about. Do you need anything else from us or any other information?
Yeah, I just wanted to also kind of input.
I had a question, and maybe this is more for staff. Um, it sounds like for budget, we would have to have this on our radar leading into this budget season of starting to commit funds or be aware of matching or reimbursement or whatever, starting to like set funds aside. Um, so how, how are we just making sure that that, beyond us monitoring it, gets brought back up in the budget process? Is that something that you would take on?
Yes, I would set funds aside. I mean, just unless you have the project and, okay, we're going to apply for it this year. It's probably going to come through this year. I wouldn't budget for it. But when we go through the budget process, just know that when you're looking at fund balance, you don't want to use all the fund balance. Because just like, you know, stuff comes up throughout the year that sometimes you want to take out of fund balance and use. So I wouldn't necessarily, do you know how much it would? Exactly. So it's kind of hard to, to, to do it, um, to act, and there's enough time to actually do a budget amendment. Or this, this is long-term stuff. I mean, even with the CBD, CBD grant, I mean, it's still working and it's, it's going good and great. But it's a long-term thing and normally we can look at the budget or look at numbers to figure out where the money's going to go.
Well, I can say that one of the, the, the SS4A grant has a minimum for the size of our city of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Like, like that's, it, it won't even look at it if we don't leave that.
Whoa, sorry. What was the last word you said? Balance or?
Minimum project cost.
Oh, okay. I understand. Yeah.
Not our cost.
So I understand that this was just for discussion, but, um, I feel like we need some action items here. The reason being is because I started a petition before I was on council and got fifty-plus signatures of people willing to give up the, um, easement, which they don't actually own. But they were just like, I'm aware I don't own my easement. I would like you to use my easement to create walking trails. And that was specifically about Wood Creek Drive. Um, significance of work considering the amount of houses on Wood Creek Drive. Uh, they weren't all from Wood Creek Drive though, so that was a part of the petition, is understanding where everyone lived. But that there was a desire that wherever they lived in Wood Creek, they were willing to give up that easement. So to me, I think the action items here would be the city, we also have a 501(c)(3) now for me that could take on parks, improvements, walking trails are part of that. But we need to start this process. And I think everybody's sort of waiting for somebody to take the first step, whether that's the city begin budgeting for surveys to address where we could potentially even place the trails. Or if we decide to take, I mean, we've tried to address this on a survey before about the placement of the trails. And, um, we received pushback from then city manager Brent Lewis about even having it on a survey. I don't think the citizens want another survey right now, so I don't want to necessarily go down that route. Uh, I know we briefly discussed the idea that they could go along the golf course, but technically, that's not very safe. So that's not a great idea. I know we've discussed, hey, could the golf course let us walk after hours? But that doesn't address all the mobility concerns. So I just think some first steps need to be set, right? About Grant Works, looking at grants, the city's going to have to commit funds at some point. We need to think about that in budget time. But what steps do we actually need to take now to start moving this forward?
Well, that's what I'm asking. Do we have a motion?
Um, I'm going to go off of, refer back to the packet. So in our packet is the engineering study that, that came out of our town hall or land use project. And I thought it was interesting is the amount of traffic for walking, um, is, uh, Wood Creek Drive, Brook Hollow, and a section of Champion Circle that kind of goes up this way, but it's not all of Champion's. And I was looking at when it comes to heavily walked areas, this is what they, this the citizens have designated are the most heavily walked areas. Um, I was like, well, those would be, for me, a perfect, uh, possibility for a sidewalk tour on one side. But yeah, I agree with you that we could take steps now to further explore them. I'm not sure what those are.
Can I make a suggestion for a motion?
Make a motion?
I'm scared. I. Um, council, stood. Take steps to establish ADA compliant walking trails along Wood Creek Drive and Brook Hollow. With the first of those being, I'm sorry, hold on a second.
Wood Creek Drive and Brook Hollow.
Do you want to include?
No.
With the first of those being?
They had equal traffic.
I understand.
Okay, what is the motion? So where do we, could we?
Committing funds in the next budget planning session for engineering and land survey costs to plan a route in the right-of-way easements.
Do you have what you said?
You can finish right there.
Okay.
Okay, so verbatim, and then there's a pause. Council should take steps to establish an ADA compliant walking trails along Wood Creek Drive and Brook Hollow with the first of those being committing funds in next budget season for engineering and land survey costs to plan a route through the right-of-way easement.
Do you want to clarify the first being, or do you want to?
Well, there was significant interruption and I, I really wanted us to move forward sooner than the next budget. But I realized that we are kind of in a weird environment with our funds right now and we're pending a budget amendment. The second that I would have suggested would be contracting out for those services. Um, like going to, you know, setting up the RFP.
I'll just, just, so we can.
Because I believe we could set up RFPs now anticipating that we would commit funds to it and begin that, that.
Okay, we've got your motion. You've introduced it. Chris, you've got a comment.
I've seconded it.
Okay, you seconded it. Okay, discussion, let me, discussion. Chris, go.
Um, does this motion allow that if there is a grant, like the implementation grants, would pay for engineering, or not implement, implement, the planning and demonstration grant would pay for the whole? would pay for the mobility of the engineering studies and the design studies and all that? And I want to make sure that our motion is flexible enough to say, okay, well, we've got the grant money to go pay.
That's why we would just be committing, we would set, we would create a committed fund and Gary would set up the RFPs now with the idea that we would be ready to post them if we were able to commit the fund or if the grant came through.
Okay, so it's about establishing the fund, not.
We have a fund.
For walking trails? No?
Yes. You, well, no, what you're, what you're talking, what you're talking about is is not what you're trying to do. The fund that it would go into would be the capital fund and the line item in that fund would be called walking trails. Now that would have to be done with a budget amendment. If you wanted to establish it now, or it would be in the capital portion of the budget when we come up, when we do the budget at the end of the year.
I'm saying, I said, when we start planning our budget here in July or whatever, whenever you start, um, that we we would create a line item and we would set aside funds specifically committed. It would likely go under engineering, a part of it, right?
No, it would go walking trails.
But it wouldn't be under the engineering portion because.
Because it's capital.
We would just set it under capital improvements, like other projects we've had before.
Correct, just like the the parts is in capital. Um, the roads are in capital. That way, um, those funds do not get reallocated back to fund balance at the end of the year. Once the money is in there, it stays in there.
Correct.
So, yeah, it would actually be, yeah.
So that's what this motion does, essentially forces us during the budget season to to do that.
Correct, if we budget, you have, if you if you passed it. Yeah, I guess you'd be required to at least put one dollar into that.
Well, if we don't ever start planning for it, we won't do it. That's the point. And if we wait until we're ready to do it, then try to reverse budget for it.
Yeah, I'm not saying don't plan for it, but you know, that's.
Yeah. Okay, okay, let's get back to that. We've got a motion. We can, we can, your discussion. You have anything to say, Leonard?
Yes, um, I've been doing a great deal of work on my own trying to figure out how we protect the pedestrians and what can be done and what the impact will be, which which people will be really affected. And so I think it concerns me to um to take this out of the hands of our direct work and give it to um a consultant. I I'm just uncomfortable allocating any funds just now. I, and I also know in our survey, there's a lot of people want walking trail. There's a lot of people that say we we don't want to change the character and we don't want sidewalks. So I'm just concerned about getting a better feel for what we can do before we turn it over to a professional who will just stamp out a plan.
So I want to verify, Chris, we recommend this, please, it just meant to go more orderly, so go ahead.
I want to verify that I understand the motion, which is we're simply creating a budget line that would address possible walking trails for Wood Creek Drive and Brook Hollow.
We are, may I, may I clarify?
Go ahead.
We are establishing a location to start, Wood Creek Drive, Brook Hollow. We are establishing a location, right of way easement. We are establishing that we will begin planning for these things in the budget by creating a wide item for the execution. Obviously, the first thing that would have to happen are an engineering and certain land surveys that would establish the pathways and any obstacles in them. These are just the first steps for a project like this. We've actually already been through this discussion with the previous city manager Brent Lewis. That's why I have this background knowledge. We also talked about the approximate cost of about a half a mile to a mile of trail, right, at that time period? We talked about the approximate cost of um what a land surveyor or engineer. I mean, those costs alone are going to be anywhere, depending on how far we want to take this. Be from like ten grand as very base level, surface level survey tree here, this, that, to like fifty thousand dollars in scope of like uh slope of land, um, reworking, you know, like the, if the trail has to deviate slightly. I mean, then even if we, a budget, right? Even if we set aside money, even if we set up these RFPs to start even procuring these services, after all of that, that plan, we have to get citizen buy-in. We have to then submit that plan to the citizens in the town hall and say, you know, Betty Jo Bard on fifty two Brook Hollow or whatever, are you okay with this portion of your easement? What um landscaping features are you going to be losing? What is the, you know, um, this project has been executed in other cities. We have models, specifically in Canyon, Texas, I talked about it before. The city did do this. They went and retroactively fitted sidewalks. And for some people, that was fine. Some people, in the petition I started, the idea was even maybe potentially some residents, if we had a plan, could take on their portion and implement it themselves to reduce the cost for the city. Um, so like in my front yard, I could easily install an ADA compliant walking trail with no repercussions for my land, right? And I would be willing to take on that cost. So to me, the first steps were establishing location, right? An agreement finally on all of that. Then we are establishing essentially, we need to create a plan for the people we're going to hire to do the plan and what that should look like, who they should be. And then we're going basically in the next budget season, say, we're going to start setting aside money to do this.
Okay, we got any more, you got a second? I I think, uh, Monaya, you've got one more bite. Do you have anything else to say?
Um, I would like to limit that. I'd go with it if we limited to Wood Creek. I don't want to see Brook Hollow included at this summit.
Okay, uh, you accept that amendment? We have all the motion.
Well, I guess I would just want to know a little bit why we would exclude the other major thoroughfare in the city.
Because I don't know if it's been established that that's the other thoroughfare. Why, which other streets are excluded? There were a lot of comments on Champion Circle. Um, but I know there's strong, strong belief for Wood Creek do one section and make it work, then it'd be easier if we want further with the drive.
Let me say this, I'm I'm kind of confused because I thought basically we were going to just authorize, you know, Chris to kind of push on the grants and kind of see where that went. And then we kind of took a step to where, I mean, it looks like we're going to start budgeting for trails. And and I'm concerned because we we don't have a lot of the background and where they're going to go, you know, what are they going to be like and that kind of stuff. So it seems a little more than what I was expecting, just that we proceeded with the grant aspect of it. So I don't know, I'm a little confused on that, but um that's all I've got to say. We've all had our bites of the apple, so y'all want to vote or what, what do you all want to do?
May I, one more time, just summarize? The, we can't pursue grants without a plan. We can't develop a plan if we don't decide where and create a budget, you know?
Yeah, we I we don't have really any feedback yet, I don't think, from the grant process, so I don't know one way or the other. I would expect that's.
Well, in the packet, yeah. So in order for us to apply to grants, we're going to have to have.
Okay.
Um, that's why there's this concept called a Vision Zero Plan. And that's about reducing injuries during mobility. That's a very specific kind of plan. Um, but we will need an action plan.
Yeah.
When we submit an application.
Got it. Okay, uh, I'm going to finish up and just say, I'm not sure I'm ready to come into that level of specificity other than let's see what's happening on the process. But anyway, I'm I'm done. Everyone else ready?
Well, you can, if you, to make it more palatable, you can make an amendment to what was submitted.
Contact amendment, honestly. Um, yeah. Okay, I'm done.
I mean, we can, uh, I can withdraw it. We can let it fail. Uh, my major concern is we're once again not taking any action on walking trails after people have repetitively asked us to finally do something.
Believe me, I get it, man. I'm out there every day. Um, I I would just say this, um, if if we could maybe take a step back and just have Chris, you know, come back to the council with the the specifics that they're going to require from us when the council, and then when we got a full council here, we can hash it out, start hashing that out, you know, uh, that that's just what I think, you know, let's pursue it, let's see what they want from us with some specificity and present that to the council at the next meeting. And that's the motion I would support, but we have your motion on the table.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Do you want to? Okay, well, I would, I would make this motion and I I I'm with you. I really want to get this moving. But the motion would be to have Chris uh explore the grant process with Grant Works and and uh any other appropriate party and then report back to the council as to what specifically they're going to need for us to start moving forward on this.
I'll send that.
Okay, that motion is second. Any further discussion? Okay.
Okay, so the motion I have is to move that, correct, if you want to say, council under.
Yes, I'm sorry, council.
Explore the grant process with Grant Works and any other applicable party to come and come back to council to discuss.
Yeah, with with specifics for moving forward.
Oh, we have.
I'm not saying that.
Councilmember Chris Germer?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Pretten Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Monaya Bailey?
Aye.
That's Jeffrey, you said it visible, man.
I am. I'm so tired of this item that I'm really tired of kicking a can down the road. But we'll, we'll kick it one more time.
I hear you.
And when they come back with specifics, I hope people are ready to vote.
I hear you, man. I do. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Monaya has to be somewhere five, five thirty. Does she need to leave her file? Or what, how much time do you?
Um, maybe ten minutes, so.
Okay, well, I think the Kate Freeze thing, we definitely.
We have to do that.
Yeah, so let's take that up now.
Which is now.
Correct, very stupid. Mr. World?
Oh, this is the um contract with Kate Freeze. This is for them to do the work that is on the work summary of page one and page two, basically for the uh bond RFP, which includes the um small road chip seal project plus the bomb project, which now is all into one. It's it's called the two thousand twenty three road project to do all the rest of the roads. Um, their fee for doing all the work, analysis, um, keeping track of it, everything that they need to do is a hundred and seventy seven thousand one hundred thirty six. So that would be what they would charge us for the engineering and all their ancillary services that they provide for that project.
That's true.
Yeah.
Um, so I just heard you say that the chip seal project's been moved, rolled into the bomb?
No, the chip seal project and the bomb project have been combined into one project. So when we actually fund it, it will be half cash and mostly bond, but we will move the cash portion over to the bomb, or over to the project. So we'll have one project, which is basically two.
Okay. Um, I move to approve Kate Freeze's work authorization for the twenty twenty three Wood Creek Road Project. Do you want to have a second?
A second.
All right, discussion, uh, Monaya, you want to, oh, I'm sorry. Um, I do have one, another question. When it comes to engineering portion of fixing our roads, would this cover all of this agreement? This agreement would cover all of it?
Correct.
There isn't like suddenly later another little.
No, this is all of page three, yes. If page three's done, they're, right, they're doing all the engineering, right, there are engineers.
Around.
Correct.
Um, interesting to give, I disagree with your thought, the cost of this engineering proposal is five percent of the total bond, which is in keeping with or and or on the lower end of expected engineering costs for such projects.
Yes.
Start sharing that.
Well, I'm, no, go ahead. Sorry, um, I'm glad, there's that because I got a little sticker shock with that, but um this, and we will keep Kate Freeze's speech in the fire to meet their deadlines?
Oh, yes, yeah, and and also this is, this is the max price.
Yeah, I read that, yeah.
So.
Up to.
Right, yeah, so it is a max price. So don't be worried about them coming back and saying, oh, it's possible or anything like that.
Oh.
And and this is the item that the, I'm sorry, I didn't watch the meeting, but this button and panel met on this last week. This is that thing that they were worried about getting the draft now down before.
They're not getting the draft until uh they're going to get to RFP. They're going to get on the May, May nineteenth is when Kate Freeze has given us the RFP. Roll panel will have basically two weeks to look over that RFP that they give me or that uh Kate Freeze provides to us in those two weeks. If there's any concerns that any member of that board, they will get with me and I will get with Kate Freeze to see what we can do to alleviate any of the uh concerns that they may have.
Okay, so I'm mixing the two items up. The RFP was for like to contract out these services, so that preparing that is part of this, though?
Correct, the one seventy seven?
Yeah.
Correct, yes, yes. And also they'll be out on the streets uh this week or next week. They're looking to see, they're still, we're still trying to figure out how much it costs. They're looking to kind of see how much we're we're going to need to bill. Because in their proposal right now, they're showing that we're building it all. So eventually, the number that they have are presented to me that's a big number. They're, we're gradually getting down to exactly what we need so we know when the bits come in. But yeah, that'll go to um council hopefully um first of May, no, June.
Jim. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we have the uh motion and a second. Ready to vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Pretten Brett Foley?
Aye.
Councilmember Monaya Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Germer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, I'm just waiting for Jeff to probably next time. Um, NCC number seven, discussion to take possible action on a report from the Department of Food and Committee review of chapter ninety five, sentence ten and sections of chapter one fifty six of some uh council. Uh, is that your, yours, Councilmember Hines?
Yeah, um, first off, I move that we accept their report.
My second.
Okay, go ahead, Deborah. Um, Councilmember Hines?
Um, the reason I did that way is I would just like to open it up for discussion. Essentially, they touched sanitation and zoning, which are two, you know, zoning is a huge chapter. Uh, in my submission of this item, I basically recommended two different motions. One, that we consider creating a sort of a work group or sorry, a subcommittee to deal with sanitation. And then the second motion being sending the recommendation through the zoning chapter to the ad hoc work group because they'll be uh dealing with zoning starting as early as next week. So if we send these proposals to that work group, actually, it's two members of that committee anyway, then they could be incorporated into the zoning update. Um, which I personally didn't necessarily have any issues with their proposed changes. I do have a lot of questions and concerns about um specifically the business use requirement stuff. And I think that needs a little bit more time and research. The health and sanitation stuff was really straightforward, honestly. Um, with that portion that they recommended, essentially, our code was previously mixing up community homes and retirement communities, which retirement, the elderly are not a protected class. The disabled are. Um, and our code was blending the two, unfortunately. Um, so we cannot actually regulate or prevent community homes for the disabled. In fact, the state steps in and provides regulations and this is almost, their suggestion is just copying state code essentially. And I personally believe it can be renewed. And I kind of made that consideration to them, that recommendation, they wanted to move forward with this. Um, but if we're moving forward with a less reduced portion, there are things in the actual state code. Um, but if we're moving forward with a less reduced portion, there are things in the actual state code, I feel like, should be added. That's why I suggested a subcommittee and I'd be willing to be a part of it. Um, and that's just the summary of the items.
First, I move to send both these documents to the ad hoc committee and have them view and also. I'll end it with, send them to the committee period.
The health and sanitation and the zoning stuff? You're gonna, that's, oh, okay.
Well, rather than creating another subcommittee, we've already got one. And there are two members of the ordinance committee anyway.
Okay, so.
I'll pick it.
Okay, would you have a motion already? You sent it to ad hoc, he's saying you're sending it to?
I don't have any motions. The motion would just say accept the report.
Okay, all right.
And then we're accepting it, now I'm directing the documents.
Okay, all right. So you're saying it goes where? Ad hoc committee, okay.
Is this part of after the ad hoc committee goes to it, because it's one fifty six and does it go directly to P and Z next? Just like the other one?
Yes.
Or you say go to them?
Yes.
Health and sanitation would need to.
So that, that process has been covered for the zoning.
Well, one fifty six has to go to P and Z.
Correct.
One ninety five does not, so ninety five would come back to council, but before that, it would go to legal. And go through legal and then it would come to council and one fifty six would go along with the other one fifty four to planning and zoning. So afterwards, it'd be going to, due to, the sanitation will come to council, one fifty six would go P and Z.
Correct.
Yes, okay, just want to make sure everybody's.
I just want to clarify, um, chapter ninety five. Uh, are you saying it goes to legal because they're gonna write the ordinance? Because it's literally just copying state.
Yes, everything goes to, everything goes to legal before it comes to council.
So we don't just put things in the packet and legal is expected to review things in the packet?
That's not the way it works. Because if there's a change, I don't want it to be in the packet unless it's perfect. If so, council can vote on it. The only time it should come to council, if it's ready for a vote. And legal needs time to review that and make any changes necessarily. That's a theory and bring back to council in order to reflect those changes that may need to be.
Sanitation is literally the.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it goes to legal first. Cause the, the last thing we want to do is, is put it in the packet, come before here and city attorney say you can't do this.
Well.
So it will go to legal and then it will go to city council.
Okay, so motion, the motion is this goes to ad hoc. Boom. Was that both of your ad hoc and then, um, period, what else was the motion?
The rest was all processed.
Okay.
All processed.
Chris, I bet, so, um, okay, uh, further discussion? Okay, hearing done.
Okay, so voting on the, on the second motion to send both of the documents to the ad hoc committee. Councilmember Lina Bailey? Councilmember Chris Germer?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Brett Polley?
Aye.
And voting on the motion to accept their report. Mayor Pretend Brett Polley?
Aye.
Councilmember Lina Bailey?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Germer?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
So ordered.